Whether it's just a little tiny bit or a great big thing, it doesn't matter. It's every elected official's job to make your community just a little bit better. I feel very, very good. After 15 years in office, there's a lot of things out there that got done. And I'm very happy with that. So, thank you for everything you've done for the city of Sparks. We appreciate it.
Thank you, and well said and mission accomplished.
Thank you.
You've been listening to a conversation with Councilman Ron Schmidt, who served the City of Sparks Board Five since June 11th, 2001.
Classic car fan to stand on Sparks every August for a week of classic rock and roll, great food, and beautiful machines. Hot August Nights is an iconic Sparks event that brings thousands of people and millions in revenue to the region each year after year. After a run of close to three decades, Hot August Nights is a huge success for the City of Sparks. The nostalgic celebration of mid-century cars and music generates an economic impact around $215 million for the region. In 2015, the event alone brought a half million people in the town from 40 different states. Many booked hotel rooms for four-night stays. An increase in traffic helps many local businesses, from auto parts stores to restaurants. There are many changes after the 2015 event, including a new three-year agreement which gives the official hosting of the kickoff event to Virginia City. Now, every year, the Mayor of Sparks is proud to choose his favorite car at Hot August Nights. With hundreds of beautiful cars and trucks to choose from, it's never easy. This year, Mayor Gino Martini and his wife Ruth allowed us to tag along as they took on the very difficult task of choosing one car.
out there to congratulate our winner of this award.
And that's it for this installment of Spotlight on Sparks. I'm Adam Mayberry. Thanks for watching, and be sure to stay in touch with the city on Facebook and Twitter and the city's own mobile app. And remember, it's happening here.
Even if no one in your home smokes, secondhand smoke can be closer than you think. Secondhand smoke from a neighbor's apartment can enter your home through air vents, through light fixtures, and even through cracks in the walls and the floors. Secondhand smoke is toxic, especially to children. Protect your family.
I have three tests next week. I'm going to be studying all weekend. Are you studying tonight? We could meet up and study together.
Oh, yeah, that sounds good. What time?
Um, I work until six. Okay, sounds good. Just text me after.
Okay. No!
There is no text, tweet, or call that's worth a life.
One pedestrian death is one too many.
Look up.
And look out for each other.
Bonus. Opening ceremonies, if you would all stand for the invocation from Pastor Barb West, Sparks Nazarene Church. Welcome again, Barb.
Thank you, Mayor.
And again, and again, and again.
Thanks so much. Wish you all a drawing me by bowing your heads in a prayer of peace. Oh, our heavenly Father, we have so much to be thankful for. And the first thing we want to thank you for is this beautiful day that we awaken to. We thank you too, Lord, that we live in a country where we can still elect our leaders. And we thank you so much for these leaders that sit behind me. And, Lord, I would ask you to bless each and every one. Give them health, give them peace of mind. And, Lord, you've told us that if we don't have wisdom, all we have to do is ask you. And so impart your wisdom to them as they... as they work on your business today for our great city. Please bless these people, and, Lord, all of our first responders as well. Thank you for the City of Sparks and all that it means to us. We pray these things in Jesus' name, and thank you. Amen.
I'm going to take that as a sign as that he heard you, Barbara. He's channeling through you, so I think we're in good hands. Thank you. Could all remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Mr. Adams, would you lead us?
Please join me. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is public comment. If you want to make public comment, please fill out one of these cards, and I'll put you up right now. You have three minutes. And we have a bunch of others, but those will come under the agenda item itself. So, first, we have Anonymous. Come on up.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm speaking anonymously due to the retaliation we survivors of domestic violence are receiving. We received a response from Attorney General Laxalt regarding the illegal destruction of abused children's evidence in court case files, and I'll respond to what he said in just a minute. As of 2013, legislation was passed that you all can have the Attorney General represent you in these matters. And another option available to you, of course, is the city attorney. But remember, I met with the prosecuting city attorney, and she stated there is no provocation language in criminal statutes. That is incorrect. There is provocation language. That may explain why domestic violence is not being solved in this city. The third option available to you, of course, is you can retain your own attorney. But remember, the State Bar of Nevada was sued in 2008 by its staffers, and one of the employees for the State Bar of Nevada did state under oath that... and she is the employee at the State Bar of Nevada who handles all complaints about attorneys. She said she did not have any resources to investigate attorneys. Going back to Attorney General Laxalt's response in regard to the child abuse evidence being destroyed throughout the state, including this community, he is asking for immunity. He is not arguing that evidence is not being destroyed. He's not arguing that the people who are destroying the evidence and those who are authorizing the destruction of the evidence and concealing that information, he is not arguing against that, and he is not arguing that no one is putting a stop to it. What his argument is, is immunity. Now, immunity is an interesting subject in Nevada because years ago, sovereign immunity was waived. So, no one has sovereign immunity, but you all can ask for qualified immunity. Qualified immunity means you have to have a cause of action in court to disqualify you from being sued. Adam Laxalt's argument is that the immunity is a disqualifying... that he is committing a disqualifying act, and that is the destruction of evidence is a discretionary option to the courts. Destruction of evidence is not a discretionary option to the courts. Destruction of evidence is illegal when minors are involved. And if there are statutes that... may I just have 30 more seconds? Okay, thank you, sir. The destruction of evidence, where in the statutes it does address destruction of criminal evidence, there is a procedure to follow, and the courts are not following that. Thank you very much for your time, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, next we have Mindy Elliott.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the Sparks City Council. For the record, I'm Mindy Elliott. Today, speaking as a board member on behalf of the Nevada Humane Society. On October 12th of last year, the Sparks City Council considered approval of an ordinance on feral cats. On behalf of the Nevada Humane Society, I made a presentation, and there was a long and thoughtful discussion about feral cats. At that time, I felt that we had a good understanding of the issue, and we also had an excellent resolution to the satisfaction of the mayor and the city council. You can imagine my surprise when I learned that the City of Sparks continues to spend time and financial resources making inquiries to Washoe County Animal Services, which also requires the county to extend their resources to research and respond to the City of Sparks' request. I have a letter dated September 6th from the City of Sparks requesting information on cat colonies. To learn that the City of Sparks continues to spend valuable time and financial resources on this issue is surprising. I am sure that the City of Sparks has much better uses for its taxpayers' financial resources than on issues that have been previously resolved. We are all pleased that Mayor Martini just stated in the State of the City that the City of Sparks is finally recovering after the brutal recession that many local municipalities experienced. We are your partner on this issue through the county, and on behalf of the Nevada Humane Society, we are happy to provide a formal update to the council once we have had updated statistical information. We also have the responsibility to be good stewards of our financial resources, and to help all of us, we are happy to work with your staff to coordinate scheduling if you would like such a presentation. I thank you for your time, and again, we all want to be stewards of our financial resources, and I thank you very much.
Thanks, Mindy. I think we have some questions. Mr. Adams?
Yeah, a couple of different things. Responding to the public comments. Concerning domestic violence, our office enjoys a conviction rate on domestic crimes and domestic violence, which is close to three times higher than that of the national average. So, I don't understand why somebody would say that we wouldn't prosecute crimes of domestic violence. As far as NHS's recent comment, I made a FOIA request for information concerning the number of cat colonies within the City of Sparks. NHS isn't a party to that. I'll make a public records request once a week if I believe it's in the interest of our community to do so. So, I don't think the city council can prevent me from making public requests or requests for information that is otherwise public. NHS has absolutely no standing to come up here and whine about what it is that I do in my official capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That answered my question. My question was, can I get a copy of the letter? Because I believe that that makes a lot if Mr. Adams sent the letter out. I'm sure he'll... I could ask you to have a letter forwarded to me. And I'm kind of taken aback about this because I think that... I believe that's good government, is when one government is under contract with another government in which the Washoe County is under contract with the City of Sparks because our taxpayers pay that money, and if there's issues that need to have answers to it, it's good government that one government can ask another government to give them that information. It's bad government when one government says, "We're not going to tell anybody anything that goes on in our government, no matter if it affects your community." So, I believe if our city attorney asks to know what... some information of what's going on, there's a reason for that to be asked. I think that's good government, to be able to ask another government who you're under contract with to provide you that information.
Okay, thanks, Mindy. Okay, let's move on to... anybody else under public comment? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? Okay, if not, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, Item 5.1.
Bibby?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Bibby to approve the agendas outlined. If I have any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Number 6, 6.1, consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting of September 12th, 2016. Any omissions, deletions, or corrections? Looking for a motion, Ms. Ratty.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Spin that. I got that. You guys got me confused. It's easy.
I'll second whatever Ms. Ratty wants to go with.
Anything I want to do?
Women reason.
Anybody, if you think I've lost control here, you're completely right. We have a motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Schmidt, to approve the minutes of the meeting of September 12th, 2016. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 7.1, announcements, presentations, recognition items, and items of special interest. 7.1, presentation by the Director of the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities on the League's adopted bill draft request for the 79th session of the Nevada Legislature. Welcome, Mr. Henderson. How are you?
Doing well, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
How was that 20-minute trip down from Carson City?
It was fine. Unfortunately, I won't be back home until Friday night. You're making a return trip until then.
You're taking the long way home? Is that... Go ahead, Wes.
Be our friends down south. Yes, sir. So, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. For the record, my name is Wes Henderson. I have the privilege of serving as the Executive Director of the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities. For the 2017 legislative session, which is going to be here before we know it, our board directors approved the submission of four bill draft requests. The first bill draft has to do with vacant properties. We're seeking to enabling legislation that will allow city governments to pass ordinances, giving them more authority over vacant and abandoned properties. The second BDR that we put in seeks to expand the existing authority of cities to collect delinquent sewer bills by having them placed on the property tax bill. We want to expand this to all municipally provided utilities and not just limited to sewer. The third BDR that we put in has to do with the distribution of fuel tax revenue. Under current law, only a town with a full-blown town board is entitled to fuel tax revenue. So, we seek to expand this to other types of towns and GIDs that have the responsibility for the construction and maintenance of streets and roads, that they get a portion of the revenue that's derived from the existing fuel taxes. Then the last BDR that we have submitted has to deal with affordable housing programs. The intent of that BDR is to create a base allocation of funding to ensure that these programs, which have done enormous good throughout the state in getting people into homeownership, so that they're sustainable and they have a... they know going in every year they have a reliable source of funding authority. So, those are the BDRs that we have put in. Unfortunately, we are authorized five. The board only approved four this year. So, those four that we put in are part of the 447 BDRs that have been filed as of last Monday. That sounds like a lot. That is a lot. Unfortunately, there'll probably be about 650 more or so during the course of the session. And with the BDRs, all you know is the title. You really don't know the language of the bill, so you're not sure exactly what it's intended to do. But we've already identified over 50 BDRs that may be of interest to our members, including over 10 BDRs on elections. Other topics include insurance, business licensing and registration, tax credits, public safety personnel, and governmental and public financial administration. Of course, we really won't know the tone of the session until the morning of November 9th, after the votes have been counted that were cast on November 8th. Then we'll have a little better idea of what the makeup of the legislature is going to be. So, that is the discussion on the BDR topics. Briefly, if I could, I want to touch on the conference, which is going to be here in about two or three weeks.
Let's have some... there's good questions first about the BDRs. Question, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Wes, on the delinquent utility bills, do they already go on the property tax bill?
It's enabling. The city can elect to put the delinquent sewer bill on the property tax bill. There's a procedure where they have to notify, obviously, the county clerk.
And she's in favor of putting them on the bill?
Well, right now, you can put sewer bills on there.
No, I'm talking about the utility bills, not just sewer. Because there's a problem usually, because if they have delinquent taxes, they can foreclose on that property and put a lien on it. And, you know, just... and I'm just talking from the perspective of the flood project, when we're trying to get them to collect our fees for that. They don't want to get involved in that because if somebody pays their taxes but doesn't pay their flood fees or utility bills, then they'd be subject to the same type of discipline, if you want to call it that. So, they're in favor of that? She's in favor of doing that, or she doesn't even know yet?
We have briefed NACO on our BDRs. We haven't briefed individual counties.
Okay, so, okay. And answer my question. So, and this would only affect cities and counties that own their own utility, right?
That's right. It's just municipally provided utilities.
Because we don't do that. Right, we don't have electric, so we can't put electric on it. Somebody that runs their own electric, citywide.
Right now, in statute, a city can put a delinquent sewer bill...
Yeah, we do. That's the only one we...
On the tax bill. That's the only one you're authorized to.
That's the only one we're authorized to.
So, we're trying to expand that so that if a municipality does provide other utility services, they could have the option to place that delinquency on the tax bill.
Okay. It's not everybody can't do it for bad powers.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wes, thanks for the presentation. Your third BDR in fuel tax distribution, is there any intent to looking at Washoe County or Clark County's fuel tax distribution and the cities involved in all that?
It would not affect the cities.
Would not affect the cities?
Yeah.
Just general?
We research it. Because of the way the fuel taxes are allocated, you know, there's several features, including population and assessed valuation and road miles. Okay, so the cities... all those figures would be the same for the city. If we get this bill passed, it would only affect... the revenue would go to towns and GIDs that have the responsibility for the maintenance of roads, but that piece would come out of the counties.
I would encourage to continue doing work on the fuel tax distribution on the city's levels. You know, I'm not going to talk for Clark County. I know that in Washoe County, we had reached an agreement at the 2005 legislative session through a memorandum of understanding, and that lasted about two years until the recession hit and Washoe County backed out of the memorandum of understanding. There's some real issues with the fuel tax distribution on the city-county levels, and I would encourage to continue. I know that's not in that bill draft knowledge yet, but I would continue looking at that as a possibility.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Wes. Conference?
Conference, yes. To be here before you know it, we've been busy planning the conference. I'd like to thank, you know, Mr. Mayberry and Tracy for their assistance. They have been very helpful. I think we're going to have a really good conference. We've got some great speakers lined up. Our opening day keynote speaker is Roger Brooks, I believe you guys are familiar with. The Friday general session, our keynote speaker is going to be a gentleman named Tony Rusi, who is a national expert on cybersecurity. You know, as we move more and more to where everything is being stored electronically, it becomes more and more important to protect that information. So, I think that will be pretty good. Briefly, some of the educational sessions that we have, we're actually going to have two sessions on housing, one on the challenges and one on some solutions and some programs that are out there. Volunteerism, local government revenue, social media, healthcare insurance and Medicaid, transportation, and local government autonomy. I think we're going to have a really good conference. The general sessions and the educational sessions are the meat and potatoes of the conference, but I think also just as important are the social events that we have because that gives you a chance to interact with your colleagues from across the state and discuss your challenges and your successes, you know, and learn from each other. So, two of the social events we're going to have, we're going to turn everybody Irish for a night, which is going to be a lot of fun, and then we're also going to have a barbecue out at the Sparks Marina and actually learn the history of that. So, we're looking forward to it. Registration is coming along very good. I think we're going to have a well-attended and a fun conference.
Should be a good time.
Should be.
Especially turning into an Irish one. I mean, everybody likes to guzzle whiskey, don't they?
Every time I say that, I get a little lilt in my voice. "I'm going to turn you Irish for a night."
Slancha?
Yeah.
Okay, any questions for Wes about the conference? Okay? Thanks, Wes.
Thank you.
We look forward to it. Have a good trip around the state. Okay, 7.2, proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. Somebody from fire prevention. I usually see Mr. King, but I see Chris Chapin. Is he okay?
Thank you, sir. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, and you can do your thing. Whereas the City of Sparks is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our community, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas U.S. Fire Departments respond to 369,500 home fires in 2014, according to the National Fire Protection Association and FPA, and whereas U.S. Home Fires resulted in 2,745 civilian deaths in 2014, representing the majority, 84% of all U.S. Fire deaths, whereas fire responders for the City of Sparks are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through the preservation, prevention, and protection and education, and whereas the 2016 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Don't Wait, Check the Date, Replace Smoke Alarms Every 10 Years," effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of replacing the smoke alarms in their homes at least every 10 years, and to determine the age of their smoke alarms by checking the date of manufacture on the back of the alarms. Now, therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim October 9th through the 15th, 2016, Fire Prevention Week through this city, and I urge all people of the City of Sparks to find out. Find out how old the smoke alarms in their homes are, to replace them if they are more than 10 years old, and to participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of Sparks Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week. Thank you.
Well, Mayor, and members of the council, thank you for acknowledging and recognizing fire prevention. Fire Prevention Week. It's known, that dates all the way back to the great Chicago fire, and started with, I guess, Cal, right? But this year, we want to go ahead and help expand on that message of checking the date, you know, with the smoke detectors and actually replacing them. And that's where Project Safe will come in, and also Project Remembering When. And those two programs are going to combine with this year's 27th Annual Pancake Breakfast, which will be October 8th, starting at 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Fire Station 1. So I encourage everyone to come down and enjoy pancakes and learn a little bit more about fire prevention, fire history, and how to prevent and keep their, not only businesses safe, but their families as well. Because as we know, that any kind of fire or anything, whether it be commercial or residential, is not only damaging, but very, 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 very difficult to recover from. So this year, at the Pancake Breakfast, we're going to have a puppet show presented by Inspector Recchab and his son Garrett. They put on an excellent little show for the kids, and we will also have fire demos in the back, auto excitation, kitchen fire demo, as well as just a general overall open house of Fire Station 1. So station tours, and again, you know, for $5, you can get a breakfast, you can get pancakes and everything, so please come on down. And we are doing the Third Annual First Alarm Fire Run as well. So, thank you.
The other thing you can see is the mayor and the city council actually working.
Oh, yeah.
I know a lot of people think we don't do any of it.
It's the only day that I actually work.
It is fun.
But it is a great way for us to interact with the community, and I really appreciate your support.
It is, it's a great deal. I love going down and flipping pancakes and stuff, so come on down, watch your city council at work, your tax dollars at work even, you might say so. There you go. Questions, comments? Okay? Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it. I think you're probably up next, no? Proclamation, Fallen Firefighter Memorial, that's the chief. Okay, come on down, chief.
Let me read this, and then I'll present it to the chief. Whereas the United States Congress and the President of the United States have designated the day of the annual National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Service as a day to honor firefighters and emergency services personnel who have sacrificed their lives to save others by lowering the American flag on all federal buildings to half-staff, and whereas an average of 100 firefighters courageously make the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty each year, and whereas the events of September 11th, 2001, brought national attention to the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices faced by fire and emergency services personnel on a daily basis, and whereas firefighters and emergency services personnel play an essential role in the protection of lives and property in our local community, whereas the National Memorial Service marks the beginning of the annual Fire Prevention Week observance, and whereas it is of major importance that we increase our efforts to reduce deaths, injuries, and property losses from fire. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, now call upon all citizens of the City of Sparks and upon all patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to observe the day of October 9th, 2016, in recognition of the patriotic service and dedicated efforts of our fire and emergency services personnel by lowering American flags on all buildings to half-staff. I encourage appropriate services and ceremonies in which all of our citizens may participate to honor fire and emergency services personnel, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to duties have rendered invaluable service to our community and its citizens. I further call upon all of the citizens of Sparks to remember all fire and emergency personnel who have further made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community and to pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini, council members. For the record, I'm Chris Maples, Fire Chief for the City of Sparks. I'm honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Sparks Fire Department in recognition of National Fallen Firefighters Foundation. Unfortunately, so far in 2016, 66 firefighters have died in the line of duty in the United States. This year, several of those deaths have ties to our community and the state of Nevada. On July 10th, two BLM firefighters were killed north of Winnemucca when their brush truck rolled over while returning from an assignment monitoring lightning strikes on public lands. They were Jacob O'Malley, who was 27 years old and lived in Zeproco, and 22-year-old Roel Hawkins from Reno. The Sparks Fire Department Honor Guard and our on-duty crews participated in their memorial services in July. On August 14th, Justin Beebe, a 26-year-old from Bellows Fall, Vermont, was killed by a falling tree on the Strawberry Fire near Ely. Our own brush 11 was on that fire shortly before firefighter Beebe's death. On August 21st, Ian Howard, a 36-year-old engine boss from the Plumas National Forest, passed away while on a fire assignment to the Mendocino National Forest in Northern California. Ian lived in Reno and leaves behind a wife and two children. The Sparks Fire Department Honor Guard and on-duty crews participated in his memorial service as well. It's no secret that firefighting is dangerous work, and these tragedies bring that reality home to our community. In memory of these firefighters, a portion of all the entry fees for the Third Annual First Alarm 5K Run to be held on Saturday, October 8th, during the Fire Department's 27th Annual Pancake Breakfast, will be donated in their names to the National Fallen Firefighters Foundation. The foundation was created in 1981 and was established to honor and remember the American firefighters who died in the line of duty to provide resources to their survivors and to work within the fire service community to reduce firefighter deaths and injuries. The National Fallen Firefighters Monument is located on the campus of the National Fire Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland. The monument honors all members of the fire service, whether volunteer or paid, who have died in the line of duty since 1981. Some of you may have been to Emmitsburg and have seen that monument. I've been there twice. It's a sobering experience and a fitting tribute to those who have lost their lives in the service of others. Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Appreciate it. Okay. Moving along, 7.4, unveiling of the new marina event for 2017. Do we need to close our eyes or anything?
Wait for fireworks? We've got a bit of a show, too. For the record, this is Francine Burge, City of Sparks, Special Event Supervisor, and I am here with Heidi Parker, who is the Executive Director of Immunize Nevada, and we are here to tell you about a new event that's coming to town.
Francine and I took a field trip to Colorado Springs last month, and instead of me talking about it, we're going to show you what we did.
Oh, where's the video?
We have a video.
We have a video.
All right. So we went to Experience Dragon Boat Racing, and Francine and I had never done this before, ever, and we started the day as amateurs, and we finished the day on a second-place winning team with medals. The great thing about this event is that anybody can do it, you don't have to have prior experience, all ages, all abilities, and we're excited to be partnering with GWN, International Dragon Boat Racing, to bring this event to the Sparks Marina.
As I think a few of you who have been working on this. Torumart Committee know, I've been working on getting this event to the city for about four years, and the reason that it's been kind of like in the forefront of my recruiting efforts is because it does mean a lot of income coming to the city. This is an event that is, it's popping up all over the country, and it's very popular along I-80 in Sacramento areas and also in the Bay Area. It's an event that will infuse our culture, our local, with an ancient sport. It'll raise funds and awareness for Immunize Nevada. I spent a weekend with Heidi, I got back, I got a flu shot.
I have that influence on people.
She does. And it will utilize our beautiful marina in a magnificent way. You should have seen it in Colorado Springs, it was such a fun event.
So what do we need from the City of Sparks? Well, the great thing about this event is it is a team-oriented event, so very similar to Reno Tahoe Odyssey. So you recruit friends, family, colleagues, coworkers, up to 20 people in a boat, and I know that sounds like a lot, you get very cozy in the boat, you get a little wet, too. So this is a great opportunity for the city to step up and have some great competition between police, fire, city council members. We have just amazing opportunities as well to look at, we can build our own divisions, we can create our own challenges within our community, and we have a lot of opportunity to really make this a local event. We're applying for funds.
To tourism? Torumart?
And then, we're very excited about the opportunity on social media to promote, so even though it's not till August next year, we will be starting to create some buzz, kind of do a launch, and then just continue to promote registration. We're looking at partnering with some potential other opportunities to create awareness and registration next summer. And then, really, we're looking at attendance, we have a maximum, I think, of 100 teams, but it's an all-day event, and so you race in heats, and while you're not racing, there's opportunity to hang out, food vendors, other health and wellness vendors, with Walgreens being the title sponsor internationally, it really gives us an opportunity to highlight some of our health partners in this area, and I think that's another exciting partnership that we don't have with other events here. So very unique, and we are getting a lot of excitement that is starting to build.
Sounds great. Let me make an observation about a team from the council. If you're going to have 20 people like myself and Mr. Lawson, and it's not going to be a dragon boat, it's going to be the Queen Mary, maybe? To get us on there? We think.
Dragon, the fact they do.
Exactly. So, oh, we have questions. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You opened up with the boats, and that's my question. When I first heard of this event, I thought that boat-making was part of it, that you made your own pirate boat, but it sounds like you bring in boats and people go ahead and learn how to paddle them right on site, is that correct?
Yeah, this is what we call a four-wall event, where the event producer, who is GWN, they actually bring in the boats, the paddles, the life preservers, all the signage and everything. They need a local partner, which is Immunize Nevada, who bring in the local volunteers who kind of run the thing and also get the teams.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a great thing.
Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt? You know, that was my question, too, but is it a one-day event?
This year?
Yes, this year.
In '17.
If it's successful and we reach that limit, they do two-day events with other cities, and so there's definitely opportunity for expansion.
Good. Mr. Lawson?
When I first read this in my agenda, "Drag boats, cool." But then I read on, so dragon boat sounds really good. I'm going to suggest you guys also talk to the RSCBA about some money.
Absolutely.
This is a perfect event for them.
We've started that conversation.
Good, thank you.
Ms. Bybee?
Just a question, so do the teams pay a team entry fee? How are you generating funds for Immunize Nevada? It's an entry fee, there's not, and then prizes and everything are generated by those fees, or by the sponsor?
There's a couple different ways. So in our agreement with GWN, we do receive an overall percentage of the event proceeds, which would be sponsorship, vendor fees, and then the team registration, but we have the opportunity to run our own pledge program, so other races, the teams will collect pledges based around that cause, and then that pledge program 100% goes back to us. So we'll be promoting the pledge side once registration is up and running as a separate way for a team to fundraise. One unique opportunity that I think both Francine and I observed in Colorado Springs is there's a very strong movement of survivor teams that participate in dragon boat races, so cancer survivors of breast cancer, other cancers, and so they bond over this experience, they travel together, there's a documentary, I mean, I had no idea that there was a whole subculture to this, and so that will be a big part of it, too, and we'll be partnering with local organizations that are supporting survivors.
Okay, and then the funds Immunize Nevada uses for providing immunizations county-wide?
We have a number of programs that we support, but one of the programs that we'll most likely be promoting, we haven't settled on this yet, but we do do back-to-school community clinics and school-located clinics, where we go into Title I schools and provide flu shots for no cost, and then at back-to-school time, we provide community sites to make sure kids have access to start school on time. So those are two of our main programs, but we also have a number of others, and so we're kind of working through that right now.
Okay, thank you. I think it sounds fun.
It's great. We're hoping that we'll have the registration up and ready to go by Wednesday, and start checking the City of Sparks Facebook feed for a lot of dragon boats for the next couple of days. And I also, lastly, want to thank Julia, she's the one that put the idea in our heads to connect Immunize Nevada with this event, because it's such a great, obvious choice with Walgreens being the national sponsor and with Immunize Nevada having a great volunteer base. So when we were stewing on who we wanted to connect with, Julia put that thought out.
And I just want to say thank you. Our team is very excited to be working on something in the community that's health-related but fun, so my staff is incredibly excited, and they're chomping at the bit to get started on this, so that's been exciting for us. And of course, we have a very strong partnership with Walgreens, their immunization manager is on our board, so when we were in Colorado Springs, they were providing flu shots on site, so we expect to be able to do some partnerships like that as well.
So look for the video online.
Thank you.
Ron Smith, one more. Don't forget to get your application in by December 15th, something like that.
I think we did to the end of December.
It opens up December 15th or?
Oh, it does, yeah.
No, I don't know, I know it's in that timeframe.
I think it's open now.
Okay, don't forget.
GWN is taking the lead on that.
Okay. Great, thanks, ladies. Appreciate it. Looking forward to it. Okay, let's move on to consent items, 8.1, 8.2. Anybody want to pull a consent item? If not, looking for a motion, please. Mr. Smith? Move to approve consent items, 8.1, 8.2. Ms. Bybee?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee, on 8.1 and 8.2 consent items. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, let's move into general business. Presentation discussing possible approval of the 2017-2022 Strategic Plan. Kathy Cluitt.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Kathy Cluitt, the city manager's office. I'm here to ask for your acceptance officially of the 2017 through 2022 Strategic Plan, as was presented to you by Mr. Driscoll at your workshop last week. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Ms. Cluitt? Questions for Ms. Cluitt. Okay, seeing no questions, looking for a motion, please. Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve this strategic plan.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Move by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve 9.1, the strategic plan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Good job. Great, great-
Easy, huh?
Discussion, yeah. Okay, moving on. 9.2, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the One Truckee River Management Plan.
Uh-oh.
Ms. Cluitt again.
The crew is here. We're at Menver.
It's me and my crew.
Once again, Mr. Mayor, council members, Kathy Cluitt, the city manager's office. I'm here basically to introduce, I am one of your city's representatives on the One Truckee River group. And I'm just going to introduce Angela Foose with CFA, and she's going to take a from here for a presentation on the plan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. For the record, Angela Foose, it is my great pleasure to be here today. I do want to highlight a couple of people behind me who are also here on behalf of the One Truckee River Plan. Really, the heart and soul of this project is because of two agencies, Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful and the Nevada Land Trust. And behind me is those staff members who made this plan possible. Alicia Rebon, Alex Haft, and Linda Nelson from the Nevada Land Trust, and Christie Chukarulu from Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful. We also have a handful of people from the consultant team, as well as stakeholders in the audience from On Strategy, Resource Concepts, and UNR that I wanted to just acknowledge. We've been before you before and met with you individually, so you're aware of what the One Truckee River Management Plan is. And you'll recall, this is an effort that's been going on for about a year and a half. And it started out when these two groups came together and said, "We've got a problem with the Truckee River." You know, Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful continues to do these cleanups and the problem's getting worse, it's not getting better. If you go back to the question of why isn't it getting better, then it just really opened Pandora's box. It's not getting better because of so many issues. So they started to come together and said, "Well, how do we fix this problem?" And the output of that was the impetus of this project. They started forming groups. They had a core planning team where they had technical experts and individual from your staff and from Reno and Washoe County and from nonprofit groups and from the business community. And they all kind of chimed in and said, "Here's what we think is the problem, here's what we think is the solution." And they came together and said, "Well, we need more people to help because this is more than what this group of 20 people can do." So they opened it up to another group. It was about 120 different stakeholder groups. Again, anyone with expertise on water quality, ecosystem, stewardship, public safety, fire, social issues, you name it, it's connected to the Truckee River. So the end result then is, is we have a plan that has four mingles. And they deal with water quality and ecosystem. They deal with creating a safe and sustainable, accessible connection to the river, to deal with, how do you, you care for the people that live on the river and protection of the river in general, and creating really a sustainable management plan for the river. Within those four goals, we came up with 21 objectives and over 103 strategies and action items. When you think of it in those terms, it sounds overwhelming, but we broke it down and we said, "There are so many issues, we can't deal with just one issue without dealing with all these other issues." So we came up with one set of really action items that are broken down into timelines. We said, "What can be accomplished in one year versus what can be accomplished in a two to five year, or really a long-term, you know, six to 10-year window?" So that, again, that process was going through and working with your staff and all these different stakeholder groups to come up with this information. One of the big questions that's come out of this is, "Well, that's great, we have a plan, but how is that now going to be implemented?" So just to break it down into basics for you, the idea here is not to change your policies, it's not to change your ordinances, it's not to ask for funding, it's to come up with ways that we can start partnering and working together. So that has everything to do with continuing those working groups, continuing those dialogues and saying, "Here's what Sparks is doing, here's what Reno is doing." Would it help if we had somebody come in from maybe a nonprofit who's also doing something else but could partner with you guys, that you're not doing the same thing or maybe areas where you're missing something, they have that piece that they could bring to the table? I think a great example right now is NDEP, that's Nevada Division of Environmental Protection. You know, it's a federal, state-level agency. They are working on a water management shed, water management plan. Staff from Reno Sparks County is also working with them. So that's great. They have funding, it's not necessarily funding that you guys have, it's funding at a different level, but they're working on a plan that affects you guys. One component of that that they have to have is an education piece, something related to education of the Truckee River. While that's not something that necessarily you guys would focus on through the One Truckee River Initiative, there are a lot of groups that focus on education of the Truckee River. So we've partnered those groups. We have grant funds to come up with, creating a separate document that they can then use to move forward with their watershed management plan. Again, what a great concept, right? It's kind of teaming up together and saying, "If you're already doing that, why don't we piggyback on that and use that as part of our plan?" So that's just one example. Here's more in terms of graphically, kind of what the vision is for the Truckee River. And again, these are very basic. These are things that, you know, if you go to Boise, if you go to Sacramento, any town that has a river, these are reasons you go to that river. So here's some basic examples of, you know, what the Truckee River looks like now and the potential for the Truckee River. Here we have an industrial area where your back is pretty much to the river. Let's open that up and make it more of a place that people want to go for a bike ride and people want to walk and people want to learn about the river. Another example is this idea that we, we really don't have a lot of information out there for tourists or locals to say, "Here's why you should come to the river." So we talked about doing a smartphone app. So if you want to go for a bike ride on the Truckee River, you take your smartphone, it will tell you, "Here's a great place to stop and learn about the bats that hang out under this bridge." Or, "There's, there's bike racks over here, so if you want to stop and go get a lemonade, this is where you would do it." How about restrooms? Well, I don't know where the restrooms are. The app would tell you where the restrooms are. So if you're, if you're hiking or walking or running along the river, especially if you have kids, and they say, "Mom, I got to go to the bathroom," "Sorry, kids, it's not for two more miles," but you have an app here that can tell you where the nearest restroom would be. One thing, again, that I think as a community we have failed to do is really embrace the river. Here's an example of a casino with its back towards the river, it's fenced off. That's really a shame. We should be using that as a place to say, "Hey, tourists, look what we have to offer." So again, an example of if we clean up the path, if we open it up the river and we actually invite people to come down there, businesses will start to embrace the river for what they should be doing. Same with our parks. There's a lot of underutilized parks along the river and part of it goes back to safety. If people don't feel safe going to the river, they're not going to go. How do we make them feel safe? Well, we coordinate with the police departments and the public works departments and agencies and nonprofits like Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful that actually do cleanups. And then we start encouraging events like, you know, 5K runs along the river. So it forces people to go down there for a reason, and once they get down there, they say, "This is a lot better than I thought it was. I'm going to start going down the more often." And it goes back to as well, well, who's going to take the lead on that? So that's where the One Truckee River Plan comes into play in saying, "Let's start working with these groups, encouraging them to go, and when they go, make sure it's a safe, accessible place for them to be." I wanted to just mention briefly a lot of the social issues. You know, that, that really comes up in every discussion we have related to the river is what's being done about the homeless encampments along the river. Sparks has really taken the initiative, even in the last three months, and done a lot. So I just wanted to call some of those things out. As part of this process, Washoe County has been given a grant, it's about a year-long grant, for three community case management workers. And so these are the people that when Sparks PD goes down to the river, they team up with those case management workers. So it's not just having a conversation with the police department or, you know, NDOT who's doing a cleanup or Tom Wall who's doing a cleanup. They actually have somebody down there providing social services to say, "Are you a veteran? Let me tell you what we have to offer for you." You know, "Are you a single mother and you need help, you're just down on your luck? Let me help you put it, put you in a situation where you can do better. Are you hungry? Let me show you where you can get food." So that's made a huge impact. A lot of times they'll just go and leave their card and people will actually follow up. So if they're not responsive maybe the day that those case managers are down there, they are following up. So it has shown to be effective. Another thing I want to call out is, is that, you know, this voucher program, I'm sure you guys heard about it. There's now 50, I would call them Section 8 vouchers, it's similar to Section 8, but it's a voucher through HUD specific to the homeless population, where a lot of times that homeless population wouldn't qualify for some of these home, these vouchers because of their history, either criminal history or any kind of felony on their record, they wouldn't qualify. So there's, there's 50 of them that can be given out to anyone in Reno Sparks, Washoe County, and it's associated with a specific project. So a project had to apply to accept these vouchers. The new Lincoln Apartments, which just opened next to City Hall, has been granted five of those vouchers. So that's very, very exciting. Again, things are happening and we just wanted to bring it to your attention. So like I mentioned, we broke it down into one-year action items and then the two to five-year and then the six to 10-year. So this first year really is going out and trying to better understand, what do we have? And then we can figure out what we need. So we have been working with, for example, your GIS department. So they, they do all the mapping, right? So we've reached out to Reno Sparks, Washoe County, and any of the nonprofits that have any data on mapping information in terms of where are the signs along the river? What's the condition of the path along the river? Where are the restrooms along the river? Where's the lighting along the river? Where are the, you know, drinking fountains? And are those drinking fountains working? Where's the art? So we're basically taking what you guys already have and combining it into one, one data resource. Based on that, we know what we have, but then we also have some gaps. So through this initiative, there's been some grant money that's been funded to actually go out and figure out where those gaps are. So the information that maybe Sparks doesn't have about the City of Sparks, we can now go back and bring people in to go find that data. So if you don't know where your, you know, your benches are located along the river, we now have people through this grant funding, they're going to be able to go out and map that information. So at the end of the day, we'll have one complete set of information. Based on that, then, we'll be able to go back to Reno Sparks, Washoe County and say, you know, "Here's maybe where you're deficient in some of these areas. We can work with you to say, if you want to spend capital improvement funding to put in some of these resources, here's where we suggest that you maybe want to do that." Or if it's maybe not something that's in your budget, again, in working together, that's where the grant funding comes in. And through this initiative, they're able to kind of team up and partner with Sparks and other agencies to get funding to do some of these things. One to five-year action items. So this is more of what can we do once we get the, the basic information, kind of what, what we know, what we need to know. This would be the next step. So a lot of it has to go to more of, gosh, we don't have an answer now, but it's something we're going to have to work through in the next five years. There's been a lot of discussion about this concept of a linear park. We don't know what that looks like. I've heard it, you know, not just among Sparks council members, but Reno and Washoe County and a lot of nonprofits, saying, "We have this resource, why do we divide it up between different jurisdictions? What would it look like if it was one Truckee River resource?" Well, let's spend a couple of years kind of looking at the pros and the cons, looking at different structures and what that could look like. And if it's something that everyone's on board with, you know, then you can move forward. But again, that's something in the one to five-year timeframe needs to be investigated. Beyond that, I just want to, you know, again, acknowledge that your staff has been wonderful. They have provided a lot of insight, they've provided us with a lot of connections to the different departments and personnels and given us a real resource in coming up with this plan. We are taking this plan to Reno Sparks and Washoe County and asking for adoption from all three jurisdictions. We are also taking it to a number of different nonprofit groups and some of these other big groups such as the Flood Control Board. So we do hope that you are able to support this and we look forward to answering the questions. Thank you.
Okay, questions for Angela, we're the group. Mr. Lawson?
What's the cost, Angela, to the City of Sparks?
Phase one, I would say, year one, there are no costs. You know, we're not asking for any money at this stage. It kind of goes back to, again, what do we need to know before we can figure out what to ask for? So this first year really is trying to coordinate the information you guys have on hand and coming up with, really, a want list, I would say. The other piece to this is because you are part of a collaborative effort with other nonprofit groups, a lot of these nonprofit groups are able to get grant funding, so they're able to do a lot of these tasks without going to the jurisdictions for money. We want to continue working with Spark staff and so that, that comes into play where we ask that you be part of the working group. And that would come from, again, your, as you as council, giving your city manager the ability to say, "Yep, we want to continue working in this effort." And then, once we figure out kind of where the needs are, then we would come back to you and give you specific items that we could go out, ask for, for funding.
I think we can afford free. Barely, but we can afford it.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Angela, great job on the presentation, you know, very, very good covering all the bases and, you know, congratulations to the group. I think you guys have done a wonderful job. I support you in what you're doing because I think that as a group, you've come together faster than most groups of this type of thing that they get together, you become focused and you've got a great plan. And I, you know, in my next 48 days, I have a council, I support you in it. I will repeat, you know, what I've talked to Kathy and the other groups all along. There's a problem with the Truckee River that has to be first and foremost on our minds of everything, and that's flood. The flood project is not something that is just, you know, "Well, someday we'll get it, it's nice to have it." You know, we have just a little over 100 days to go and an entire generation will have gone by since $1 billion with the damage was done in both Reno and Sparks. $600 million in the City of Sparks. Entire generation doesn't know of what happened in 1997. And I, I just take your energy that you have, get the things done, but first and foremost in every task, when you want to have that bench out there, are we getting the same amount of energy to get this flood project off the table? You know, to get it done, to protect the citizens on things? I spent the weekend sandbagging and pumping out basements of friends of mine over in the Midwest that are just getting inundated with water. It's going to happen to get here. It's going to happen to get here, we all know it. So congratulations, you're on the right ta, right path. You know, I think that, yeah, we can afford free, but I think that there's a benefit to the City of Sparks to put money into this when you're, when time comes for the, for the right project. Thanks. But please, take that energy and focus it to the flood project and get that done, get it off the table. You're going to see, we're going to, we're going to spend $560,000 today on flood projects in the City of Sparks and we've got $20 million bond getting ready to dig, dig, you know, channels and stuff. We are serious about it in the City of Sparks, we need to get it done. Thank you for your support in it.
Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to echo Councilwoman Schmidt's emphasis on the flood also because I would hate to see this great collaboration of amazing things that we're doing and the flood project doesn't happen and we undo everything, all the hard work that you've done. That doesn't make sense to me. So the priority to this community for everyone and especially all your collaborative partners, really thinking about that being a piece of what you're looking at and what you're promoting and what you're making sure happen is critical because otherwise what you're doing is for naught if we do have the big flood and we're not ready for it. So I would echo his sentiments. Thank you for the presentation, the great work here. And I especially like the collaborative effort of looking at so many different partners coming in with so much background information and resources and, and that collaboration of, of many is what makes lighter work for each one of you, but also brings different, different perspectives, different thoughts, different priorities to something that will be truly a regional, something regionally that we can be proud of with, with Reno Sparks and the county and our citizens and businesses here in the city. And, and hopefully the result of that, you know, will be something, you know, magnificent which we can enjoy. And, and we are, you know, unfortunately, the, the reality, the stark reality that we've started with is the homeless situation. And, and that we're addressing, but that, that, and we have to, and, and everything that comes with the, you know, what we're doing and what Reno and, and we're doing together for the homeless on services, but on cleaning it up, that's a start. on services, but on cleaning it up, that's a start because a lot of people still don't want to go down to the river. So this is a start, addressing the homeless and then what you're doing to really get us down, everyone down there to enjoy one of our most beautiful natural resources. So thank you for your time and energy and I'm looking forward to it.
Ms. Ratty.
Thank you. First of all, I was able to participate on the One Truckee River Plan as a member of the Social Services Committee. And so I wanted to just, again, provide kudos to the team, starting with a ridiculously packed forum in the McKinley Arts Building. And next time, we're definitely going to have to do it someplace bigger. And just the amazing volunteer energy that has gone into this from very beginning. But that volunteer energy also then had the effective support of some amazing professionals. And I don't know if you understand the powerhouse group of women that you have sitting back there in the front row, but they make amazing things happen out of almost nothing, so thank you. And then, of course, the wonderful professional support on strategy and then Angela, who's in her team. I agree with Councilwoman Schmidt. I'm just so thrilled with how far this has come, come from where we started. I also want to say, acknowledge the inherent tension between the social services issues and the natural resources issues and that that's, there's not a simple solution on some of those things. And that I am very proud of the city of Sparks over the progress that we've made over the last three months in getting to a services, services-first approach and trying to make sure that we are meeting both the human needs on the river as well as the natural needs. And it's not perfect and we've got to figure out how to sustain it. So I don't want to say we're there, but from when we started this conversation to where we are now, you all have done amazing work. Our staff in particular has done some amazing work, law enforcement, public works, working together. So, and working collaboratively with a lot of wonderful nonprofit and government partners. So just super exciting, excited to see how it progresses and thank you all for letting me be a part of it and for continuing to move it forward.
Okay, one thing for me, could any, everybody that's involved with One Truckee River Plan raise their hand, please? Well, it looks like we need some gentlemen to get involved here, do we not? Okay, well, good. Absolutely, always. I'm worthless, but I'll volunteer anyway. Anyway, for me, this is good, good stuff. I think the Truckee River is the one natural resource that we have that we do not take advantage of. I mean, it's a wonderful asset to have and we just let it sit there. And I know there's restrictions and you have to go through a lot of hoops to do anything on that river. I understand that. You got to talk to 17 different agencies and the Corps of Engineers and those kind of people just don't listen. They just don't listen to what we want to do. All they do is they have their narrow focus and that's all they care about. So it's difficult to do things on this river, so I appreciate what you guys are taking on. It's a big process, but it's got to start somewhere, right? Because this is a great natural resource. Again, it's a natural resource that sometimes kicks us right in the teeth, but, you know, we got to do what we can do to, and Sparks is, I'm proud of Sparks for working on the flood control project. I don't see, you know, I'm not pointing fingers, but I don't see any other agencies out there spending their own money to do something for the flood project. I mean, we're there and the citizens of Sparks are putting their money in. So they're not just mouthing off. We have some skin in the game here and we need other entities to step up to get some skin in the game here, really, and so this thing can happen. But now, one thing, we're going to make a motion here very soon, I hope, but I got some cards here. Now, I'm hoping that everyone that has cards in, handed wants to speak. I have 95 cards here that are in favor of, in support of this motion. Anybody out of these want to speak? I've got several letters and things too. So it's anybody against this? So I mean, it's the first time I've ever looked at something like this that's got 100% for, so it's kind of a hard deal to beat. Does anybody want to speak? Okay. Moving on, let's bring it back to the council for action. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, I'm very, very happy. Congratulations to all that you've done. I look forward to seeing the fruits of your labors in the next few years and hopefully the city of Sparks will continue to remain a good partner and we can get, we can get some things done. So I would like to make a motion to move to adopt the One Truckee River Management Plan as presented by the Nevada Land Trust. Keep a trucky medal, it's beautiful.
Mr. Schmidt.
Seconded that motion.
Moved by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve the One Truckee River Plan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Okay, there you go, folks, unanimous. And again, you know, again, I hate to pat ourselves on the back, but again, Sparks takes the lead, does it not?
Thank you so much.
You bet. Thank you, guys. Okay. Now, you guys can stick around and listen to the rest of the stuff if you want.
The muddy force is coming.
This should be really rousing.
Plotting for me?
We were. And now the Grim Reaper.
Yeah, Hoopy Pants is on.
Please, right? I've had other things.
All right, moving on, let's go. Consideration and approval of resolution number 3302 authorizing the execution of, execution is a, not a good word there.
Legal term.
Execution of a waiver and consent agreement in connection with the insurance issuance of the Redevelopment Agency of City of Sparks, Nevada Tax Increment Refunding Bonds Redevelopment Area Number Two, Series Two of 2016 by the Redevelopment Agency of City of Sparks. Mr. Kronk.
All right, good afternoon. Jeff Kronk, for the record, wearing my financial services hat. So I have before you, it is authorization to execute a document. We're not executing it today, that's the issue. We're actually looking to, for the authorization to finalize this document. What we're looking for is to save some money with, for the redevelopment agency. We're going to be considering at the meeting this afternoon and after this one, issuing some refunding bonds of the 2008 tax increment financing bonds that were issued in relation to the Legends area. So in order to do that, there is an agreement. The development agreement is between the city, the redevelopment agency, and RED Development. So this agreement, this resolution would allow us to move forward with that. And it's actually the city's portion of agreeing to waive, in effect, the provisions of the development agreement that would really allow us just to do the refinancing. So the development agreement was kind of silent and kind of unclear about what future refundings may happen. So this is really just to kind of cross the t's and dot the i's and allow us to proceed with refunding and issuing some bonds that would save the district or the agency some money. So that's the gist of it with that all, entertaining questions.
Questions, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff, I think I got a pretty good gist of it, but I want to make sure I just covered all. All we're doing is refinancing bonds we did in 2008 to a lower interest rate. Are we extending the life of those bonds?
We are not.
We are, so it's same, same. Two of the three partners are the redevelopment agency, the city of Sparks. We'll get that done today. What issues do you see with RED's development saying that, you know, we want something in exchange for this signature?
They haven't indicated to me that that's the case at all. So we're expecting them to be in agreement to this to date. I guess as of now, I have not heard back from them, so this is really just kind of an agreement that they need to look at and sign off on, but I don't expect that they would have any issues with it.
There's nothing here that's subordinate to any other bonds that we've, these are standalone by themselves. It's not a senior mezzanine, you know, none of those labels of bonds, correct?
Well, these are senior.
These are seniors, okay.
These are senior. These were originally issued in 2008 and they would remain in the senior position. Again, we're not changing any of the, you know, rest of the bond covenants or provisions. It's really just taking advantage of a lower interest rate.
Good luck. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion? Ms. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve resolution 3302 authorizing the execution of the waiver consent agreement in connection with the issuance of redevelopment agencies, city of Sparks, Nevada, increment revenue refund bond series 2016.
Ms. Bybee.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee to approve resolution number 3302. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Jeff. 9.4, consideration, discussion, and possible approval to participate in an agreement negotiated by the Nevada Health Partners, NHP, with WellDyneRx, Inc., to manage the pharmacy benefit for the city of Sparks Group Health Plan in the amount of $51,500 and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement for this service. Ms. Falk.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Mindy Falk, Human Resources Manager, for the record. Agenda items 9.4, 9.5, 9.6 are all related to participation agreements for the city's pharmacy benefits. Our current pharmacy participation ends on December 31, 2016. A new agreement is needed to provide pharmacy benefits to the city's employees and retirees on January 1. The city contracts for healthcare providers with Nevada Health Partners or NHP. NHP research providers for pharmacy benefits to spring. They have chosen the option that is for your approval today and it will save the city a projected $497,833. All of the participation agreements before you today are included in the projected savings. The solution is to have three participation agreements replace the one company that's managing our pharmacy benefit today. The three companies are WellDyne, Gateway, and True Choice. What is the employee impact of this change? They'll be, they can go to any pharmacies they go to now, so they don't have to change pharmacies. The formulary will save the same as it is today, as it will be on January 1. And WellDyne has offered to help anyone who has questions about the transition. Agenda item 9.4 is a participation agreement for the claims administration with WellDyne. What WellDyne will do is pay the claims for the city. This company is, the employees will interact with and assist them with their pharmacy concerns and they have 24/7 customer service. And with that, I will take any questions about the WellDyne participation.
Questions for Mindy. Ms. Ratty.
So we had an opportunity to talk about this before, but I just wanted to make sure that it got on the record. So with the change in our health insurance, our global health insurance, it was a bit disruptive for some, particularly for some of our retirees who perhaps tend to be on more medication and perhaps have less quick access to support because they're not interacting with the city on a regular basis anymore. And so I would just like to understand what the, get on the record what the disruption is expected to be and also what our plan is for addressing any disruption.
We definitely learned from that experience and have started talking early with WellDyne about our retirees in specific, because you're right, they don't have the same access to computers and communication than they do than our employees who can just stop by HR, although we welcome them to come anytime too. So we are starting to get a plan with CVS, our current provider, to find out what prescriptions we need to talk to employees about and make sure that there's no disruption, especially for specialty drugs, things that are harder to get and may need mail order. So we're working with them already in anticipation because we agree, we really want this to be less disruption.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Wendy, we've talked about this and I thank Ms. Ratty for bringing the question up, is that I think this is the right thing to do. It's been a weak spot, but I'm very, very concerned, you know, what we went through with the insurance program and that this is, that the questions the employees has, that they don't take, you know, days, weeks, and months to get answers to and resolutions. This is too important, not only, I think, for the retirees, but for anybody, any of our employees are, that, you know, just mail one medicine. And if it takes forever to get that process done, you know, then that's, that could be something that hurts them in the long run. So I just, I'm just going to echo Ms. Ratty's, is get the plan in place. If you never use it, fantastic. Everything was great. Nobody's going to, going to, you know, sit down and say, hey, you know, you spent too much time planning for this thing. But if we get to the point where we got, you know, backlogs and phone calls and issues, then getting a plan in place to handle that would be great. And I'm just going to echo that and I thank you for it. I know you're going to do it. I know we've learned from the experience, so thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee.
I move to approve participation in a three-year agreement negotiated by Nevada Health Partners with WellDyne, Inc., to manage the pharmacy benefit for the city of Sparks Group Health Plan in the amount of $51,500 and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement for this service effective January 1, 2017.
Do you have a second? Mr. Schmidt.
I'll second.
Moved by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Schmidt to approve agenda item 9.4. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 9.5, consideration, discussion, and possible approval to participate in an agreement negotiated by Nevada Health Partners with the Nevada True Choice LLC in the amount of $14,878 to manage the pharmacy network.
Mindy Falk, Human Resources Manager, for the record. This participation agreement is with True Choice. They will provide our network of pharmacies. And again, employees can go to any pharmacy they want. And I just would like to point out, there was a mistake on the pricing on this agenda item. It said that it's $2.25 per claim, but it is not. It's 65 cents per claim, which makes the $14,000. And with that, I'll entertain any questions.
For Mindy. Okay, if none, looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty.
I move to approve participation in an agreement negotiated by Nevada Health Partners with Nevada True Choice LLC in the amount of $14,878 to manage the pharmacy network of providers for the city of Sparks Group Health Plan and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement of this service effective January 1, 2017.
Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve agenda item 9.5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 9.6, consideration, discussion, and possible approval to participate in an agreement negotiated by Nevada Health Partners with Gateway Health Procurement in the amount of $22,500 to aggregate pharmacy rates on behalf of the city of Sparks Group Health Plan. Go ahead, Mindy.
So Mindy Falk, Human Resources Manager, for the record. This participation agreement with Gateway, pharmaceutical companies offer rebates if you have their drug on their formulary. Gateway's role in our three-tier system would be to find rebates for the city plan. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions, Mr. Schmidt.
I make a motion.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to move to approve the participation in a three-year agreement negotiated by Nevada Health Partners, NHP, with Gateway Health Procurement, Gateway, the amount of $22,500 to aggregate pharmacy rebates on behalf of the city of Sparks Group Health Plan and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement for this service effective January 1, 2007.
Mr. Schmidt.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve agenda item 9.6. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Mr. Mayor, I can, Mindy, it's rumored that next week you have a plan coming for a change of health providers? No. Okay, darn, you had me excited there.
Only one year, sir.
Okay, 9.6, passed unanimously. Okay, let's move on to 9.7. Presentation, discussion, and possible approval to award a contract, AC 5292, to Corn Fairy Hay Group in the amount of $90,000 for a classification and compensation study. Go ahead.
Mindy Falk, Human Resources Manager, for the record.
Jill Valdez, Human Resources Analyst.
This agreement is a project approved for the fiscal year 2017 budget for a classification and compensation evaluation. Jill Valdez is here to explain more information on projects. She'll be the lead on this.
First of all, I'd like to talk or recap for you some of the goals of this project and then talk to you about the vendor that has a proposal before us. The goal of this study is to reevaluate the city's job structure and pay bands to make sure that our class and compensation system is properly aligned. The city has approximately 130 jobs or job families for review. The mayor and city council salaries will not be subject to this review. They are established through municipal code. Throughout the study, communication with employees is essential to success. That's something we wanted to make sure that our vendor would understand. In the initial phases, employee, union, and management participation will help establish job duties and job descriptions. A standard format allows jobs to be placed in a fair and systematic classification structure. From there, salary data is analyzed and the compensation recommendations are developed. One key outcome the city hopes to achieve is transparency with the process and fairness in the evaluation of jobs and pay. The study will result in recommendations. No changes to job titles or pay will happen without union and council approval. So that brings us to the vendor proposal before us. We looked for a vendor with the expertise and the philosophies that would allow us to accomplish this project. Corn Fairy Hay has over 70 years of expertise in this area. They are industry recognized and highly regarded for delivering a well-designed class and compensation product. There are a limited number of vendors with the expertise required for this project. The vendor recommended by staff has government experience, experience working in a union environment, Nevada experience, and very importantly, local experience. Their model incorporates participation with stakeholders like employees, managers, unions, and council, and they finish their product with a communication with both our employees, all stakeholders, and the council. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Mr. Lawson.
I don't remember us talking about this, Mindy, when we had our meeting last week.
We didn't talk about this.
Oh, good, I'm glad, that's why I don't remember. I'm not sure the reason for this, so I'm just uncomfortable at this moment because I don't know enough about it. So I'm going to ask, we moved it to the next meeting, so I have some more time to do more research.
Is that going to cause any problems, Mindy?
Nope.
Okay. Okay. Can we have further discussion? Ms. Bybee.
Yeah, I had a question. Have we done this type of analysis? Have we gone outside and asked someone to come in and do the job classification analysis and pay, and this, has this been done before? And it's been a long time since we've done this and reevaluated? Or kind of, why did, why did we, why do we feel that there's a need now? Are we out of sync with everything and it's time to do it, or is this something new?
Actually, it has been such a long time that it hasn't been done in anybody in HR's history, so I think the longest, we've been here 11 years, and it definitely was five years prior to that. So that's why we were asking this today. We think this is a need, we really need to look at it and get it realigned and make sure that, you know, one of the things Jill mentioned, and we strongly believe in HR, is that whether or not you agree with what you get paid with, we want you to understand how you're getting paid. That's one of the things we think is really important.
So is it going to, will it, will it change, and it will just be more transparent and further define what the jobs and responsibilities and compensation is? It's not necessarily going to streamline or combine, because are we looking at positions that don't need to be there anymore, and some that maybe we don't have? Or is that a totally separate issue that wouldn't be looked at by this group as far as the efficiency of running, you know, the city? Are we over some, well, we're not over anywhere, but do the jobs make sense that we have, and do we need to look at adjusting that?
Sorry, I didn't mean to catch off, apologize. They are not going to come in and say, you know, you don't need this job, but they might say, you have these three titles, and they all do the same thing, you should combine them together. So that's what they'll be looking at. And yes, we will be very much looking at job duties and, you know, base level, make sure the employees tell us what they're doing, and that we all understand what's going on in our organization. So job descriptions will be very much reviewed in this process.
15 years for a class and compensation study is about 14 years too long, probably, so. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mindy, you made me feel real old to say that I outbid everybody in the, in the Human Resource Department, because I remember the last class and compensation study. If I remember correctly, we did that in-house, did we not?
I believe so, yes.
Because that was my question. This is the first time that, in my memory of what we've done, we've done some minor classification, comp and class studies, but not a full-blown one, and then what we did was in-house. The, and I looked at this, and, you know, I think I had some of the same things with, with Mr. Lawson, going, you know, what are we spending $90,000 for here? Except for I started remembering some of the issues we had with some of the bargaining groups, because we did all the information in-house. They thought, well, it could have been tainted, because we had in-house people doing this, and how do you classify the benefits structure? What's that worth? Those types of things. And, you know, and I understand Mr. Lawson's hesitation on it. I think we're going to come around to the point, even if it's now or two weeks from now, that we're going to do this, because I think we'll run into all the same problems again if we do it in-house, is that some people may feel that they were, you know, were biased against when the study, but an outside person comes on in and say, hey, look, you know, these are your wages and your benefits, and you're within, you know, parity of X amount of number of groups in the area, and that leads a weight to it, and that's the end of the story. And I don't want to get back into what we got into before by doing it in-house, where people felt that there was questions within the study. Who did the study? How did they come up with that number? And let's argue that number, you know, it's, so I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward with it. I don't have a problem waiting two weeks if we have to with it, but I'm in favor, well, it'd be three weeks now. I'm in favor of moving forward with it and getting it done, because I think it's worthwhile.
Yeah, I don't think this problem has to be done by some, an outside looking in. Ms. Raddie, go ahead.
What's best practice for how often you do a compensation and benefit study?
So what we would like to do is establish, so they're going to come in, they're going to help us establish what our pay bands are, and then we would like to come up with a review schedule. So it would be ongoing, not that you would need to do this sort of extensive, you know, study every year, but probably seven to 10 years, I would say, that you would want to come do the cycle.
And I would assume, I know what happened with the, the health department, was during the recession, we really did Swiss cheese our org chart, and we did do some adjustments after that, but I don't know that there was necessarily the time and space to do a comprehensive review. I think we've done a little bit better here at the City of Sparks in reacting to the recession and making adjustments along the way, that were very thoughtful, but they were internal. And I, and I still don't know that we ever did the holistic view, and there was significant impact during the recession. So I would support the concept as well. I'm okay with delaying to give time just to understand the idea a little bit more, and perhaps be able to better articulate the benefits, but it does make sense to me that it's helpful information to have, and it's something that we should get back in the habit of doing on a regular basis.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion to continue this until the next meeting? Is that what we want to do, jet?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Lawson.
I'm going to make a motion that we continue this to the next city council meeting in October.
Do you have a second? Mr. Schmidt.
I'll second that.
Moved by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Smith to continue 9.7 until the next meeting in October. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Thanks, ladies. Uh, 9.4, consider as possible approval of a contract, AC 5293, for Pa-Ra Park Pre-Manufactured Restroom Building Bid Number 1617-4 to the Public Restroom Company. Brian, go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council. For the record, my name's Brian Kason, Capital Projects Manager for the City of Sparks. I'm here today to present the Pa-Ra Park Pre-Manufactured Restroom Building Project for consideration and possible approval to the Public Restroom Company. This was a publicly, publicly bid project, in which the Public Restroom Company provided the only bid of $274,808. The Public Restroom Company will provide a pre-manufactured restroom building that will be heated and open year-round. The building will provide ADA-accessible restrooms that will better accommodate the increased use of the park, due primarily to the installation of the All Abilities Playground back in 2012. By using a pre-manufactured building, this will greatly minimize construction impacts with the building being built off-site. And with that, being the end of my presentation, I'll take any questions you might have.
Questions for Brian. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian, does that include hooking up the sewage and everything else, or is that, are we going to see that next?
Yeah, or no. Basically, this is the actual building. They'll, they'll drop in there. We are working on the design plans for the site work.
Okay.
And the reason we're kind of waiting until we get the actual company that's providing the restroom is because there's the location specs and what they require, and that's what we're doing.
So we have a bathroom there now, don't we?
There's a bathroom there and there now. It's in pretty bad shape, it's just two single holes.
So there's already sewage going in this bathroom?
Yeah, there's already sewage, water.
Okay.
Everything's right there. We're putting it in the exact same spot, so the site work will include, that will come back to you guys at a later date, essentially demo of the existing building, basically plumbing right up to their stubs where they need it, and then putting in, basically, a foundation that they dropped this building on.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian, I want to talk a little bit about the bid process with this.
Yes.
Because I see no engineer estimate on it, so which tells me that we didn't have an engineer design the thing. Did, did we have conversations with the Public Restroom Company and have their specs when we went to, to bid?
We essentially, we did visit the Public Restroom Company. We had got, we had talked to Washoe County about a building that they'd put in, out by Shaw Mill School, I believe, and it was a very similar structure to ours, so we went and just basically looked at what the structure was and, and basically see if it met the conditions that we wanted to have. And so, yes, we basically based our stuff off of what they had available, but it was still, everything said it was or equal. So we did have a couple other people that basically got the plans and looked at it, but they were from out of state, and so essentially, Public Restroom Company was the only one that bid on it in the end.
This is one of those items, that if you bid it this way, you're never going to get a contractor within 500 miles to touch it, because it's just not going to work out for them, you know, but you can't, you know, the Public Restroom Companies, I know their business model, they submit their plans and stuff to, to this is what you want to bid out, and then nobody can touch it. And, and so what I'm concerned about is, you know, and I understand public restrooms are extremely expensive, is that
Yeah.
How did this compare with the Washoe County job? And, you know, can we look around to see if there's other companies on out there even value that, you know, they're getting in Los Angeles, it's the same price with another different company for what you're, what you're going to get? I, I know it's, it's, this is one of those niche things in construction that can just bite, it's just, it's just difficult to swallow, is that there is, once you take their bids and their, their plans, and you send their plans out for bid, you've locked everybody out. You've locked everybody out, because they can't do it. And, you know, I've seen it successfully fought in the bidding process before, but I need just a little bit of comfort that we've, we know that, we knew going in that we're going to be in the $275,000 range for this thing.
Yes, we did actually get the, the actual estimate, or the actual cost for construct, or for the building from Washoe County, which they just did, I believe it was last year, and it was very comparable to this number. It was slightly, I don't remember the exact number, it was slightly less than this, but because it's, it was a year ago, of course, it's a little bit more. But the number was basically reasonable for what other similar structures were, were built like, and there are other structures in the United States, or other companies that basically build the same buildings, just Public Restroom Company is the only one locally, they're in Minden, and so I'm not sure how, I mean, it was publicly bid, advertised in the regular areas that we advertise in and everything, so, and we had it out for ample amount of time also.
Okay.
So the one in Rock Park was a little over $500,000, wasn't it?
That Rock Park?
The permanent, the actual we built?
Yeah, it was a 500, ended up being 550, I believe.
Something like that.
Somewhere in there, yeah. And ultimately, we, because we built a restroom, two restrooms out at Gert, and each year we built, had these, and we had them actually constructed with a contractor. Each year, the price just kept going up and up and up.
Yeah, yeah.
And so ultimately, when we looked at this building, a public restroom that had everything that we wanted in the building, and also the, the way they heat the building, too, is just, it's a great, great mechanism that they used for heating the building, and that was a problem we always had with, with the heated buildings, too. And they've done this for a long time, so obviously, all this stuff is really bulletproof, and it, it's done very well.
So this is the price. I mean, this isn't, this isn't an engineer's estimate, this is the price we're going to pay for, you're not going to put it out to bid. This is the bid.
Well, we, we did bid it out.
That's what I mean. It's not, with this price, you're not going to put it out and try to get somebody else to bid?
Oh, no, no.
It's already done.
It's, it's, the building was bid out, yeah.
I was confused, but we were approving the contract.
Yeah, basically, the contract with them, and it was bid out and everything, and yeah.
Yeah, I was confused. I thought he was saying you're going to put out the bid, and you're locking everybody else out.
Oh, no, no, no. No, we basically did a, had the layout, and then we, we used Public Restroom just as the basis of the structure itself.
Okay.
And bid, of course, like always, or equal, so that they could submit, if they have something that's similar, they can submit it to us, and, and we'll look at it.
And I thought that's what it was.
Yeah.
I just, I heard his question, and I was confused.
Yeah.
Ms. Bybee.
I just want to say, I appreciate the providing a restroom there, especially with the playground, with the new playground, you know, the abilities, playground there, I think that's important.
Yeah.
And, and because it is one of our, trying to think what the term is, Tracy, for our, it's, it's our biggest park, community park, community park. So I think it definitely is needed. I support the fact that we're doing the pre-manufactured, the difference in cost, and then tying up your site with the work that has to be done. I, I think, I think it makes sense, and I like the cost on it, too, so I fully support.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's the other thing that played into it, that the parking lot for that park is, is very small. If we were actually constructing it, we would have to have some sort of staging area where we'd be taking away from some of the parking there, whereas this one, normally it'd take about three months or so to do the bathroom. This one, it'll, the site work will be very quick. I mean, there's demoing, putting some concrete work in, and so it'll probably be three weeks, maybe a month, at the, at the very most, to have a, a structure ready to go and in place and, and operation.
And that lot is always full?
Yeah.
That parking lot there?
Yeah, and the parking lot's always full. I know I go there with my kids sometimes, like, every time I go there, even the winter time, it's, it is packed.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, looking for motion. Ms. Bybee.
I move to approve the contract with the Public Restroom Company in the amount of $274,808.
Do you have a second? Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve 9.8, the contract, AC 5293, for the Pa-Ra Park manufactured restroom building. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Okay, 9.9, consideration possible approval of a second amended inter-local agreement A 3086 regarding national pollutant discharge elimination stormwater permit implementation between the City of Sparks, City of Reno, and Washoe County. Mr. Hummel.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Martini, members of council. For the record, Andy Hummel, utility manager for the City of Sparks. This second amendment is pretty simple. We did our first agreement between Sparks, Reno, and Washoe County in 1990 for our stormwater permit that allows us to discharge stormwater to the Truckee River. We amended it in 2004, in that 2004 agreement. The language was such that it was a five-year per, agreement, and then an automatic renewal for another five years. The intent was an ongoing fi, every five-year renewal, however, it wasn't worded clearly. This amendment is cleaning that up, so it'd be an automatic five-year moving forward. That's my presentation. If you have any questions.
Questions for Mr. Hummel. Okay, looking for motion. Mr. Lawson.
Um, I move to, well, here we go, there we go. It wasn't coming up. Move to approve the second amended inter-local agreement as outlined by staff.
Shreddy.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Ms. Raddie to approve Agenda Item 9.9, A 3086. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Good job, Andy. 9.10, consideration of possible termination of agreement AC 5294 on management of water rights pertinent to street rights of way between City of Sparks, City of Reno, and Washoe County. Shreddy.
Yes, thank you. Again, for the record, Andy Hummel, utility manager for the city. This one, in February 2007, Sparks, Reno, and Washoe County entered numerous agreements related to the 6,700 acre-foot requirement that was in the Truckee River Operating Agreement. This specific agreement was, what do we do if the street water rights that we thought we had enough to meet that requirement? If we don't find enough, how do we fund purchasing the additional rights that'll be necessary? We were able to acquire all those rights through other means, we didn't have to go out and purchase any ourselves, so this agreement itself, where we were outlining how we would pay for that, is not needed, and so we're asking to have it terminated.
Questions for Andy. Mr. Lawson.
I have a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
No questions. Move to approve the termination of agreement on water rights as outlined by staff.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve Agenda Item 9.10, AC 5294, cancellation of water agreement. Any further questions? I lost my, my, there. Okay, seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. 9.11, consideration of possible approval of a purchase agreement for a temporary construction easement, storm drain pipeline easement, and payment for a temporary right of entry in a total amount of $549,845 for the North Truckee Drain Phase III project. in a total amount of $549,845 for the North Truckee Drain Phase III project. Go ahead, Andy.
Yes, again, for the record, Andy Hummel, utility manager for the city. With this item, we're asking for approval of a purchase agreement for the temporary construction easements, storm drain, pipeline easement and temporary right of entry on two parcels that are affected by the North Truckee Drain Phase III project. As indicated, total reimbursement to that owner is $549,845. Both of those parcels are under the same ownership, so with this one, we will have one final easement to acquire before we can go out to bid on Phase III. That easement we received just last week, so we'll be presenting it October 10th. Both of these final property owners that we dealt with, it was a lot of time and effort by both the owners and staff, specifically crew lighting in the attorney's office and Amber Sosa, our senior civil engineer on our side. And on this one, Jerry Crew, the owner, put a lot of effort, were a large impact to his property, taking up over half of it while we're in there and had several tenants that we're working with, so he's been very helpful in trying to get it moved forward.
Mr. Smith. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I'm correct, it's 11 down and one to go.
Yep.
Congratulations.
Yeah, it feels like it's a long time coming.
Glad to see it. I'll look forward to the October 10th meeting to having that come forward and we can go to bid at 3:30 October 10th for the project and have it on our table a month later, that would be, that would be great.
Yep.
Thank you. I'll be happy to make a motion if there's any. We've got other questions first. Do you have any other questions? Nope. Okay, go ahead, Ron, make a motion.
I move to approve the purchase agreement easements and payments as outlined by staff and congratulations again. I know this has been a tough one to get through.
Mr. Lawson.
I'm going to second that and also say, good job, Andy. It's been a long time coming.
Motion made by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Lawson. Any further discussion? Did you have questions, Julia?
No.
Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Andy, good work.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we can get this other one done and get in, get in the ground before we have another flood because we know we will sooner or later, so thank you very much. 9.12, consideration and possible approval of reimbursement of the city of Reno in the amount of $464,596 for Sparks' share of a construction bid award to Applied Mechanical Inc. for Tom Wharf Laboratory Building HVAC replacement project. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and city council members. For the record, Kim Labor Maintenance Manager at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. I'm presenting today for Michael Drinkwater, who is out of town today, so I get to come in here and do this today. Item 9.12 is a request for you to approve reimbursement to the city of Reno in the amount of $494,596 for Sparks' share of a construction project awarded to mechanical, Applied Mechanical for HVAC improvements located at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. This project is a complete overhaul and replacement of the laboratory HVAC system and also includes improvements to the fume hoods located in laboratory. The last major project that was done for the laboratory was done in 1985, so we're at 30 years now with the equipment for the HVAC system. There's safety issues, permit issues, and a lot of maintenance issues with the current equipment, and this project will address all those issues. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, Mr. Smith.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Please.
Okay, I move to approve the reimbursement to the city.
What? Make the motion with your questions.
Go ahead. I move to approve the reimbursement to the city of Reno for Sparks' share of the Tom Wharf Laboratory Building HVAC replacement project in an amount not to exceed $464,596.
Mr. Smith.
I'll second with a question.
Go ahead.
Not so much the, the price, but the process. It appears, we usually do all the maintenance and upgrades and Reno does the new construction of things, and it looks like that this got flipped. Do we have a new agreement going on or anything like that that changes who's responsible for what?
This was included in the capital improvement program that was approved by the JCC. This is one of the capital improvement projects. It's actually plant-wide. We did a risk ranking to address all the HVAC issues in all the buildings out there, and because of the permit and safety issues that we were experiencing in the, in the laboratory, we chose to do this project first, so this was actually part of the Reno CIP. It's, it's, the bigger projects typically Reno takes on, and like something of this magnitude, the total project was $1,004,000.
Right.
So, this is typically a Reno project.
Yeah, we've, we've had maintenance items that have been $5 million here for the, for the plan, so I'm just kind of, just trying to figure out, because it's always been explained to me that Reno, if it's new construction, Reno handles it. If it's upgrades or modifications, Sparks handles it, and it looks like that, that is being changed now, so that was my only question.
Yes, some of the smaller HVAC projects we've done internally, like the admin building was a project that I handled about three years ago. It was about $400,000, I believe, but this one just got wrapped up when we did the risk ranking out there of all the improvements that needed to be out there. This got wrapped up into those projects that Reno's handling.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Schmidt to approve agenda item 9.12. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
9.13, consideration and possible approval of the mayor's recommendation to appoint Scott Carey to the Sparks Planning Commission from the following potential appointees, Jeff Bowling, Scott Carey, Paul Freeman, James Gaba, Joanna Lee, Jennifer Martinez, John Novak and David Shuckett. Okay, questions? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
I move to confirm the appointment of Mr. Scott Carey to the Sparks Planning Commission through December 31st, 2018.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve agenda item 9.13, the approval recommendation of Scott Carey to the Sparks Planning Commission. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, appreciate that. Scott's going to do a tremendous job, is in that field of planning as it is already and comes from good roots, I believe, so. Okay, public hearing and action items unrelated to planning and zoning. 10-1, public hearing, consideration and possible approval of the consolidated plan annual performance and evaluation CAFR for program year 2015-16 for the city of Sparks through U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Mr. George Graham, go ahead, George.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini, city council members. Today, I'd like to bring for your consideration, this is the annual required report for our grant that we received, Community Development Block Grant, whereas we're reporting on previous year activities under C2BG as well as home, and our C2BG grant was 690-some thousand and home activity until the recent grand opening with the Lincoln Apartments that was just recently opened. We required a 15-day notice which ends on September 30th as far as reporting, and I have to submit this report to HUD in accordance with that. The activities entailed pedestrian improvements, housing rehabilitation, social services, public administration to administer the Community Development Block Grant portion of the, of the report. And so, I'm just requesting approval to be able to submit the required report to HUD. If there's any questions at this time, I'm able to address.
Public hearing, so open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for action. Ms. Ratty.
I move to approve the submittal of the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for program year fiscal year 2015-16 for the Spark, city of Sparks to Housing and Urban Development.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve agenda item 9.13, the CAFR, or agenda item 10.1, the CAFR. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, George.
Thank you all.
Okay, comments from the public? Anyone in the public want to speak? Okay, comments from the city council and city manager? Anyone, Julia Ratty?
I did just want to mention to my colleagues and team here at the city of Sparks that I have submitted my name for appointment to the vacancy created by Senator Smith's passing. The county commission will make a decision tomorrow at their regularly scheduled meeting. As that raises some questions in terms of my position here on the Sparks City Council, I wanted to let folks know that have done some research and it looks like the appointment is, the first half of the process and then the second half of the process is actually taking the oath of office, which couldn't happen until a special session was called. And so, in order to try to be the least disruptive to the city of Sparks, I won't be resigning my position until there is an actual special session called. At this point in time, a special session has not been called. So, I just wanted to give you a quick update, let you know that it's possible if everything stays announced on, as on the announced timeline, this could be my last city council meeting, but I'll keep you informed.
Okay. Mr. Smith.
My question to inquire, whether we need to say goodbye today or what? I'm pretty confident if I saw the notes correct, that it was five to nothing, the appointment for you tomorrow. I don't think there's any even competition running against you, so I think the appointment will be tomorrow, so I, I, I would like to first say, in case this is your last city council meeting, and thank you very much, Julia, for all that you've done. You've been a bright spot on the council for the last eight years, and I think you're going to make a wonderful senator. Good luck to you. Thank you.
I promise to come back, whether I'm sitting down there or sitting up here.
Anything else, Mr.?
Crunk.
Crunk. There's Driscoll up here, I got confused. Jeff, go ahead.
I do have a couple of announcements to make. The following committee appointments are available. The Arts and Culture Advisory Committee is seeking one member for a two-year term with someone who possesses both a performing arts background and an arts advocacy experience. Applications will be accepted until the close of business on Friday, September 30th, 2016. Also, the Sparks Parks and Recreation Department Committee is seeking one member for a three-year term, and applications for that will be accepted until the close of business on Monday, October 31st, 2016. Persons interested in serving on these committees should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Click on City Services on the webpage, then click on Volunteering, Get Involved, then click on Fill Out a City of Sparks Volunteer Application. Thank you.
Ms. Bybee.
I was just going to comment that Ms. Ratty does have to come back in November when we do smearing in of the new council members, so you're not getting off the hook that easy. We expect to see you back on that day.
I would not miss it.
I have something for you, so you've got to come back back. Thank you.
Well, it's from me, Julia. Thank you for all you've done. I'm not real happy that you're leaving, but you've got to move on, I understand. You'll do a wonderful job up there. We'll be happy that you're up there, I'm sure, so. Thank you for all you've done here. You know how, what I personally, my feelings for you and all you've done for the city of Sparks and especially this council, you've, I think, kept us in line quite a bit, all these Republicans up here. We've finally got nice liberal like you and John Mayer, so. Thanks from the bottom of my heart, not only as the mayor, but personally as a friend. I consider you as a good friend and I, I'm going to miss you a lot, but I'm coming down there, and if you're not doing the right thing, I'm going to kick your butt, so.
Thank you.
Then, the other thing I have to say is, I got a call from the Grand Sierra today from the gentleman who is the community relations manager there, and he was beaming at, what, pardon me?
Andrew Dis.
Andrew Dis, yes, exactly. He was beaming at the job that the city of Sparks did along the river to get the homeless problem taken care of. In fact, his boss from New York, the big boss, was very, very pleased and called him especially and told him what a great job the city of Sparks done, did. So, appreciated all our staff, police, fire, community development, resources, whatever we had, everybody was down there and involved, so. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I've not gotten any further calls other than good ones, so we appreciate it, and obviously, the community appreciates it too. So, now comes the hard part, making sure we keep it that way, so let's keep going. Thanks. Anybody else? Okay, see no further business, we are adjourned.
Oh, right. I'm done.
You're checking out.
I got it. I don't want to hear about it. It's called to order the meeting, the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of September 26th with a roll call, please.
Chairperson, Ratty? Chairperson, Ratty?
Here.
Agency members, Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Martini.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams.
Here.
Acting Chief Administrative Officer, Crunk.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for the slow start, I actually am feeling a little sentimental, but I don't want you guys to see even a tiny bit of a soft side, so we're just going to plow through this. So, public comment. Do we have any public comment for the agency?
Any public.
Item 4.1, approval of the agenda.
Move to approve, Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Martini, seconded by Bybee. Any comment, or sorry, any dialogue?
Get to vote.
Please vote. Passes unanimously. Item 5.1, the minutes of August 22nd.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Got a motion by Martini, seconded by Smith. Any comments? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Item 6.1, reported claims and bills approved for the payment and appropriation transfers for the period of August 4th, 2016 through September 7th, 2016.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Second.
Got a motion by Martini, a second by Lawson. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Item 6.2, consideration and possible, possible approval of resolution number RSRA 131, authorizing the issuance of redevelopment agency of the city of Sparks Tax, Nevada Tax Increment Revenue Refunding Bonds Redevelopment Area Number Two, Series 2016, and the execution and delivery of documents relating there to Mr. Crunk.
Good afternoon. I'm Mr. Crunk, my agency services director for the record. This is the companion item to what was approved at the city council meeting. These are actually the, the resolution that would be approving, authorizing the issuance of the refunding bonds that we had discussed. So, this is going to be executed before October 11th is what we're shooting for, the date of closing, so it'll be on or about there, that all these documents that was included in your package should be approved by then. So, what we're, what we're putting in front of you right now is essentially the, essentially complete documents. There might be some final, the pricing is, is final, but some, some final wording that might be changed, but nothing substantial. So, this is to authorize the issuance of refunding bonds that should save the agency about net present value of a little over $1.6 million through the life of the, the remaining life of the bond. With that, I will entertain questions.
So, I can't see if there's any questions, so if you can just let me know if you have questions.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Second.
Got a motion by Martini, seconded by Lawson. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. 7.1, comments from the public? 7.2, comments from the agency and chief administrative officer?
I have one. Multiple hats today.
Mr. Crunk.
We do just have one item, is the next redevelopment agency meeting, which will be scheduled for the October 24th, needs to be moved to October 10th, so it's not going to be like a double session, this will be in lieu of, so redevelopment agency on October 10th instead of October 24th.